Come to order if we could, please. Vice Chairman Fisher, could you leave us an invocation, please, sir?
Let's bow our head, please. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this day and for how many blessings and for this area and land in which we live. We'd ask your blessing on all those who serve in our public safety, the men and women of our fire and rescue, our sheriff's department, and we especially ask you to take care of and be with those men and women of our armed services serving throughout the world to protect our freedoms. And heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction as we work for the citizens of Frederick County in our business this evening. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Lofton, would you leave us in the pledge, please, sir?
Stand and join me in facing the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in a vision of liberty and justice for all.
Option of the agenda, there any proposed changes?
No, sir.
All right, how would the board like to handle the agenda?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
For approved or second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The agenda is presented. Tend of items for consent are tabs A, C, D, and E. Are there any proposed changes?
No, sir.
How would the board like to handle?
Move for approval, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Tabs A, C, D, and E are approved under consent. This is the period of the meeting when we set aside time for citizen comments on any agenda items that are not subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
No one? Thank you. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? All right. That brings us to committee appointments. Board of Building Appeals. Seen one talk with Mr. Whitaker? Does not want to be reappointed. Do we have anyone? This is Gainesboro? No, he's Frederick County at large.
Large, yeah.
All right, we'll continue to look. There is a vacancy there. Historic Resources O'Peckin.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't had any luck yet in finding someone to take that position.
All right, sir, thank you. Historic Resources Gainesboro.
I'll have to come back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Planning Commission O'Peckin.
Same thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've made several calls, but have not gotten responses back yet.
All right, thank you, sir. Joint appointment, Dan Martin Private Sector Representative, Jamesy Richard Jr., Private Sector, Steven City, Virginia. Karen Helm, not for private sector. We waiting for a recommendation from Tourism?
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a letter of recommendation from the Director of the Transportation Board, Tourism Board, rather.
Okay.
And since I serve on that committee, I'd be, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Dan Martin for a one-year term, to complete the one-year term, and Richard, Mr. Richard, for a term, and Karen Helm. Repoint all three of them.
All right, and this is a joint appointment with the city?
Yes, sir, it has to go to the City of Winchester also.
All right, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, sir. Board of Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee?
Yes, sir, I'm not prepared to make that.
Thank you, sir. Conservation Easement Authority?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know about Ms. Kearns, but I would move to reappoint Gene Fisher, Board of Supervisors representative for the Conservation Easement Authority.
All right, sir? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Thank you. I certainly hope that Ms. Kearns is willing to continue. She's longtime Chair of that committee and doing a wonderful job.
Mr. Chairman, I will take it to contact Ms. Kearns and talk to her.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Freddie Winchester Service Authority.
I can do that one too, if you'd like, contact him.
These are the only two that are coming up. It's like August 31st on both of those.
Mr. Wilkins is a joint appointment with the city.
Joint, okay. All right, we'll wait for you to report back.
Okay.
Thank you for that. All right. So that will bring us to a public hearing, 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield's Foundation. Staff presenting it all? No? Okay, right ahead, sir.
I'm Pat Keough, it's the manager of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation. We are a nonprofit, which we've been doing this events at Cedar Creek for many years. I'd like to introduce our President, Jody Arazo, to speak on behalf of us.
Thank you, sir.
How you guys doing this evening?
Good.
We're just gonna do our standard tried and true event. It seems to be well received. We get a lot of turnout, great publicity. It's good for our organization, and all that money, of course, goes back to preserving core battlefield land. And I think overall, the people that attend are in learning and engaging with history, engaging with the past, and I think it's a great thing for our, for our local area. So if we could, please get your approval to go ahead and proceed with that, it'd be great.
Thank you, sir, if you would, just a moment. Are there any questions of these gentlemen? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry, Supervisor Slaughter?
I guess in reading this, were you doing something new this year for the children?
That's not going to be in the October event. That's just something we're doing this weekend. And it's gonna be basically a kids camp where children can come out and interact with living historians and learn hands-on about what the life was like of a soldier. So the kids love it. We do it every year, and it's just absolutely astounding. So if anyone knows any kids that wanna come out, bring them on down.
I wonder if I did read that, and I just wanted to be sure that you made the public aware that you were doing that as well.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this permit? Anyone at all? Anyone? No one? Would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Cedar Creek Battlefield Foundation.
It's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right, the next item is a public hearing, a draft update to the 2017-18 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plans. The primary and interstate road improvement plans establish priorities for improvements to the primary and interstate road networks within Frederick County. Comments from the Transportation Committee will be forwarded to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, the priorities adopted by the Board of Supervisors will be forwarded to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for consideration. Virginia Department of Transportation and the Board of Supervisors for the County of Frederick, Virginia, in accordance with Section 33.2-331 of the Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed six-year plan for secondary roads for fiscal year 18 through fiscal year 23 in Frederick County, and on secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 18. Yes, sir. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you have noted, this is our annual update of our interstate primary and secondary plans, with the secondary plan being the one that's required for a public hearing under state code. If I may move through these in order, I will begin with the Interstate Road Improvement Plan, which is shown on the map to your left. With only one interstate, we don't, and not a lot of construction taking place on that interstate some years now, we do not have significant changes. However, I will note that the exit 310 improvement, now that they have moved through virtually finishing Phase 1 of that eventual three-phase improvement, we have updated the plan to reflect our desire that we move on to Phase 2. So that is noted in the plan as well. Moving on to your primary road improvement plan, there are no changes. I would remind you that we added Route 50 and Route 7 last year to the eastern and western parts of the City of Winchester, to note the six-laning that was indicated as needed by modeling. So that's, that was added last year. Beyond that, there's been nothing really new added for a couple of years now. Once again, because these are primarily very significant road projects, which require larger level of fundings than has been coming our direction. Moving on to the secondary road improvement plan, which is subject to your public hearing this evening, I'll begin with the major road improvement projects. Now, the flagship project is the Sulfur Springs Road Improvement. I think you may recall that last year, when I stood before you at the update, we were under the impression that it was fully funded at that time. However, not long after that, VDOT updated some estimates, and we were no longer fully funded. We did go to smart scale with an application for that, which all indications are that is successful. So we are back to that full funding status. I know VDOT has been proceeding with right-of-way acquisition up to and including the portion that they're working to get from the landfill. Through there, it's already made its way through Public Works, and it's on its way to you, good folks, for your final action. Other projects you see on there, we do have some placeholders, if you will, on there for Red Bud Road and Brewstown Road. Those are smaller portions of design money. They're not full funding for the projects. Of course, we also have a number of our revenue sharing projects on there. I'll draw your attention to number six, for instance, Martinsburg Pike, where they are under construction in the vicinity of Welltown Road right now. That is actually partially funded through revenue sharing. That's, as you see, reflected as well. Moving on to the non-hard surface roads, non-hard-surfaced road projects. These are dirt roads in the county, which have been requested for funding. We were actually able to promote two roads this time around, those two roads. I know I'm familiar from hearing from the residents on, and I'm sure you are as well, where Babs Mountain Road, as well as Old Baltimore Roads, both roads that have been waiting for some time. As, as we do every year, we did re-update the rankings prior to promoting those two roads. Those roads actually were the top two after we had promoted last year, so they did not move down in the rankings. They held their spot. Their scores continued to be quite valid, and they were promoted. Moving on to the unscheduled list, we did not add any new projects this year. However, through an adjustment that was made, instead of going from 21 to 19, we went from 21 to 20. That adjustment that was made was Mount Olive Road. At the request of the residents of Mount Olive Road, that was supported by the Transportation Committee, we did break that improvement into two segments, to see if perhaps that first segment that goes from Route 50 to Hammock Lane would score a bit higher. And it did score a bit higher, but it still does finish at number 18, with the remaining segment at number 20 out of 20 projects. So it helped it a little, but it didn't quite get where I'm sure everyone hoped that it, that it might go as we tried to do our best job in scoring all those projects. With that, as you noted, this is a public hearing. I can take any questions you may have. The Transportation Committee considered this item on May 22nd, and unanimously recommended your approval. The Planning Commission considered it last week and held their own public hearing. There was one comment at that public hearing that was in support of Laurel Grove Road. That's actually one of your projects that's on your scheduled list. If I could characterize the residents' comments, they weren't negative in any way. She just wanted to make sure she spoke for Laurel Grove Road. That is on your scheduled list. With that, of course, it's a public hearing, and I can take any questions you may have. We are seeking action this evening.
Down there, Mr. Chairman.
Questions? Yes, sir? Yes, sir.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
On the Sulfur Spring intersection with Greenwood, can you tell me what, if anything, is gonna be done on the Greenwood section, so as you, as you improve Sulfur Spring, that intersection with Greenwood, how, can you tell me how, at this point in time, how it's gonna be addressed?
The primary improvements, as I understand them, that affect the Greenwood Road intersection would deal with site distance. Within the available right-of-way, they would be trying to improve the site distance right now. That slope is fairly steep. What's been discussed in the past in the scoping of the project is trying to lay back the slope a little more, improve your site distance. I'm not expecting significant turn lane improvements. However, that is a general widening that will create some extra space for movement there.
Then one other additional question is, there's an S-curve on that road
On Greenwood itself, yes.
Intersecting with Sulfur Springs. There's been a number of accidents, cars going off into the ditch, et cetera, trucks going off into the ditch. So if it's possible to straighten that out, or to improve that, so that on an icy day, a snowy day, et cetera, or even a rainy day, that doesn't occur, that, that would be helpful. Any comments you wanna make on that one, that one would be appreciated.
I absolutely agree with your assessment of the situation there, and that that is an issue. It's not part of the scope of the Sulfur Springs project to address it, so I don't wanna create an unreasonable expectation there.
Other questions, Mr. Bishop?
Yep. John, on Laurel Grove Road?
Yes, sir.
We always have good attendance when we have our meetings.
We do.
And folks speaking out. I drive the road a lot, and I know it really, I sympathize with them and really support them in their desire to have that road taken care of. Is there any idea where that, I know where it stands number-wise and everything, is there, you know, is there any hope at all that we can do something with that in the near future?
I wanna defer to VDOT a little bit on that question. I have been told by VDOT that their advertisement dates are fairly conservative. However, we do have Cliff Balderson and Ed Carter here this evening. They're much more closer to the boots-on-the-ground level of implementation, and I'd like to defer that question to them. They'd be able to answer it better than I.
Okay.
In terms of when they might realistically be able to get it. I know right now, the ad says 2021 for the first segment. They, they'll be able to better answer if that's possibly conservative for you.
And just one other question on behalf of one of my constituents. On Huddle Road, which is paved on two ends and a small area in between, which is gravel. Yeah, I know they're not, I think they're still on the unscheduled.
Yes, sir.
They are. Again, you know, it's one of those situations where I'd really like to see something move aggressively as we can, so just, just mention it.
Absolutely.
So it's brought back up again.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A couple of quick ones, definitions. What, on your non-hard service roads, CTB unpaved road funding, what kind of funding is that?
That's a, basically a formula fund. Commonwealth Transportation Board has a specific unpaved road account that addresses these, these roadways.
What's the CTB stand for?
Commonwealth Transportation Board.
Okay. District grant funding?
Yes, sir.
What's it?
It's a, it's Stanton District Grant that comes to Frederick County. It's our portion of Stanton District Grant. Yes.
Okay. Under major road improvements, allocated SSYP, Smart Scale. What is, what kind of funding is that?
Smart Scale or SSYP?
Both. You got them together.
It's the Six-Year Secondary Improvement Program. I'm breaking down on the analogy, but that's what that, that is. And what, I'm sorry, what was the other part?
Smart Scale.
Smart Scale. Smart Scale is the new state program. We've been through it twice now, whereby for basically every project, every major project we want funded, we have to go through an application process. After this most recent application process, which we had entered into in August, and which we're getting the final approvals this month for the projects that were awarded under that, that's gonna become a biannual process, but it's a statewide competitive process that we apply for funds under.
Federal Bridge Re-Replacement? Replacement?
Federal Bridge Replacement Funds.
What is it?
Federal dollars specifically to replace bridges.
And TPOF?
Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund. It's a governor's office fund for economic development projects. It's a, it's a grant-type program, which we have to apply for. We have $2 million awarded to us for it, for the Renaissance Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
While we have the luxury of having Mr. Bishop here, on the unscheduled non-surface, hard-surface roads, we have also Timberlake's Lane and Sir John's Road. And I know there was discussion at our last transportation meeting that there may be some possibility of those moving forward. Have, have you been given a date on, on those two? And both of those have pretty substantial average daily counts.
Timberlake's Lane, I'm gonna have to defer to VDOT on that one. I'm not, I'm not clear on the details of that. Sir John's Road, basically Cliff will be able to fill in the holes of what I don't know. But VDOT is nearing the end of a process in which they were able to get research grant dollars to do a new type of treatment that has some concrete in the mix. Normally, we're talking about an asphalt topping. This, this particular treatment has some concrete in the mix. So we were able to get that funded through a separate form. Assuming as that gets finished, that that's doing what we hope to do, and isn't breaking up and that sort of thing, we'll actually be in a position to remove Sir John's from this list.
And do you anticipate that will happen this year?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you so much.
Other questions for Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning these plans? Anyone at all? Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we thank you, and we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you take a vote, I'd like to ask a couple more questions.
Thank you, sir.
But I think Mr. Lofton, that was ahead of me.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bishop?
Bishop, if you would.
Yes, sir.
This is not for my benefit, but for the public's benefit.
Certainly.
And I hope the paper picks this up and explains it to the citizens, especially in the Gainesboro district. How are roads prioritized in establishing this schedule?
Yes, sir, and thank you for that question. What we have in Frederick County, which every county's kind of got their own way to start off with of picking roads. And what the Frederick County Board adopted well before my time here, and I think we updated it early in my tenure, is a, basically a qualitative process whereby you look at many things. You look at the accidents that have taken place on the roadway. You look at the traffic count. You look at whether buses with schoolchildren travel on the road. You look at the number of incidences of significant horizontal and vertical curvature. You look at the road width. You look at the drainage. And I think that's everything. I might be forgetting one or two categories. And those are all scored numerically and totaled to create the score that you actually see in the rating in the plan. And the roads with the highest score get promoted forward. I would note that your adopted policy does allow you, the board, if you disagree with how the scoring came out, to promote a road, just like the CTB has the power to throw smart scale out the window and promote a project. However, in my experience, that has never been done.
How often do you do the rankings?
We rerank every time we are able to promote roads, because conditions such as accidents and everything like that can change on an annual basis, so we try, especially as, as long as some roads wait. That's, that's a category I didn't mention, is how long they've been waiting. That is one of the categories. Depending on, rather, there's limited funds, and we try and make sure the rankings are as up-to-date as possible before we choose the roads. So every time there are funds to promote a road, we rerank them.
One last question, which you partially answered a minute ago.
Sir.
How much political influence affects the scheduling?
In my experience, none. Like I said, you have the power. I've never seen you, the board, exercise it.
That's what I wanted to hear, just to make sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If I may, in response to Supervisor Ewing's questions, to follow up on what Mr. Bishop said, our system of ranking roads, we've actually been complimented by VDOT on the complexity and completeness of how the roads are ranked and scored. And to me, as Mr. Bishop, again, has alluded to, it keeps the politics out of the road improvement process, which I think is, is necessary and very prudent. So thank Mr. Bishop and that department for having that process in place, where it's all done systematically.
I think it's important for the public to know what this process is.
Yes, sir.
And that's, I would be good if the paper could sort of elaborate on that.
Any other questions, Mr. Bishop? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, how would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one question of our county attorney, do we need to approve each of these resolutions, one by one, or can we?
I think one motion to approve all three is acceptable.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we consider resolutions of support for the Interstate Primary and Secondary Road Improvement Plans for 2017-18 update.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. I need to abstain from the next agenda item. Pass the chair to Vice Chairman Fisher.
Okay, this is another planning item. It's a resolution to allow the transfer of development rights, TDRs, to be utilized for proffer payments within the village at Middletown. Ms. Perkins?
Thank you, Supervisor Fisher, members of the board. As you stated, this is a resolution to allow the use of extinguished TDR rights, transfer of development rights, to serve as the monetary proffer payments for the village at Middletown. Now, note that that development is located within the limits of the town of Middletown, but it does have proffers payable to Frederick County per the joint agreement for the administration of proffers. And just a little history, the site was originally rezoned back in 2006. It was then revised this year and approved by the town council. Now, with the 2017 proffer revision, the owner included an allowance to utilize extinguished TDRs if it was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Now, I would note that this request is similar to the Freedom Manor proffer statement, and I would note that I did make copies, and those are at your seats, outlining the Freedom Manor proffer, the amounts, and the process. That development was approved back in 2016. Now, the Freedom Manor rezoning allowed for the extinguishment of TDRs for up to 300 dwelling units, excuse me. Now, back to the village at Middletown, within that proffer statement, there's a monetary contribution in the amount of $13,952 per single-family detached unit for school construction. Now, there's 180 units total with the 2017 proffer revision. Now, proffer 16.1 from the village of Middletown states that, "Subject to approval by Frederick County, in lieu of the per-unit monetary contribution for school construction, as provided in that proffer statement, the applicant may extinguish a TDR right within Frederick County. No monetary proffers for school construction shall be required for any dwelling unit constructed utilizing this method, but all remaining proffered commitments shall be applicable to such dwelling units." Now, as stated in that proffer, the use of TDR in lieu of the monetary amounts is subject to approval by the Board of Supervisors. Now, that was added in due to the fact that the Board of Supervisors does not review proffer statements within the town of Middletown, so therefore, this action would be a secondary action subject to approval by this board. So tonight's staff is seeking a decision from the board on this request, either to approve or deny the use of the extinguished rights to serve as the proffer payment. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Perkins?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ewing?
The school construction amount, $13,952, now are we talking about that total amount being waived?
Yes, per unit, yes. So the total, when you take the 180 units, it's about a little over $2.5 million.
How much do we?
2.5.
Okay. How will TDRs benefit the county versus that amount of money?
Right. Overall, the, the whole purpose of the transfer development right program, it's a rural land preservation program. So this developer would have to go out, purchase development rights from rural land, so therefore, the benefit to the county would be the preservation of rural land.
And that money would not go into the school system?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Lofton?
I just have a comment to follow up on Supervisor Ewing's question. Yes, we keep that land in rural preservation, but we also eliminate a house being built which produces a student, which costs us over $11,000 a year. So a one-time loss of $13,000 is multiplied many times by a house that might be built in the area where the development rights- in the area where the development rights have been taken off of multiple years. So that's another benefit of the T D Rs.
I understand that, but I also understand $13,000 goes a long ways right now in the situation we're in right now, providing school seats. So, thank you.
Ms. McCann, Slaughter?
Mrs. Perkins, the original intent of the T D Rs was for, could you elaborate on that? And was the original intent of a T D R to eliminate or extinguish cash proffers?
When we established the T D R program, it was actually adopted in 2010, following, many of you may remember, the rural area study from 2008, 2009. The T D R program was meant to serve as a option to allow farmers to sell their rights without selling their land, thus preserving rural land, eliminating additional residential structures in the rural areas, eliminating burdens on transportation, school system, funneling those units into the urban development area where you have those services available more readily, such as, you know, roads, bus routes, schools, all that. Originally, the whole elimination of proffer payments using T D Rs was never really discussed because that, it's not something that had happened yet. It's really something that's kind of come along after the fact as an additional allowance to help, you know, further the T D R program and preservation of the land.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, to try and elaborate a little bit, I guess, you know, the concept of T D Rs is that you're taking development out of an area where you don't want it and transferring that development into an area where you've decided is appropriate. One of the, one of the critical things for that to actually work is that there actually be a market. If I'm a landowner and I decide I want to sell my development rights on my property, I've got to find somebody that's willing to buy them and utilize them somewhere else. We haven't seen a lot of that in Frederick County for a variety of reasons. So what this does is it creates another sort of market, if you will, for those transferable development rights. So what you're, what's being proposed here is that someone will build a home in an area where we've decided it's appropriate they be built. And they're requesting that rather than pay us the monetary proffer for where that house is going, since they're not going to be building one somewhere else, they're using that right where we've decided we want it, that they're, the request is that they not have to pay the proffer. So as far as the financial impact on the county, there's one less home going to be built somewhere in the rural area in exchange for this one being built here. So it really creates more of a market for those, for those rights.
Can I bleed into your comments, though? One of the questions in reading all of this is, since we've had the new issue with House Bill 549, and proffers must be directly attributable to the specific development, does the new Senate bill have any implication on whether we can use T D Rs in one area? And I don't know where these T D Rs will be purchased, but will there be any implications on whether that would be inappropriate?
I don't, I don't think so. In this particular situation, no. Obviously, the rezoning was approved by the town of Middletown, and so that is, the rezoning approval has moved on. I think with any proffer discussion in the future, we should be very careful, given the new legislation. But in this particular situation, it doesn't impact the approval of it in Middletown.
It doesn't impact this particular rezoning and their request, but in the future, what you're saying is there could be a potential issue with that?
No.
Go ahead.
Going, going forward with the new rezoning, you are going to have an analysis showing the monetary impact on Frederick County. So what you would have would be a proffer stating that, you know, a per-unit monetary payment of this amount, or we can go buy a T D R to extinguish that. And the county doesn't get involved in the negotiations between the agricultural land buyer, seller and buyer. So that value isn't something the county would be involved in. We would only be saying that the amount attributable to the development is this amount. You can pay this, or you can go elsewhere, buy a T D R right to offset that. So Mr. Williams can correct me, but I don't think the proffer would, the proffer legislation would prohibit that because we're still coming up with an amount based on the analysis.
Mr. Williams?
As long as there wasn't a wide disparity between the impacts where a T D R came from and the impacts where the T D R was going, I don't believe that that would present a problem. It is, to some extent, unexplored territory, but...
Right. And you're not going to have someone going to buy a T D R that they're paying more for that T D R than what they'd be paying in the monetary proffer.
Understand, but I guess I wondered if, from one district to another, if you were purchasing a T D R in one district of the county to offset a proffer in another district, how would that impact, let's say, for instance, fire and rescue? Or schools? Or what have you? So that was just a question I, thank you.
I have a question. On the T D R, when you're, you know you have a subdivision, and you know you've got $13,000 plus in proffers on each house you've built. So you say, I'll trade your T D Rs for the $13,000. Now, you go buy that, that land has not been designated yet, where you're going to go purchase that.
Correct.
Correct. So I purchased that in the far reaches of Frederick County where I could never, ever build a house anyway. I'm just, the reason I'm putting that out is for public comment, so I know I'm going to be asked that question.
Right. And we have sending and receiving area requirements. So the agricultural land would be the sending area. So the county does an analysis on every single sending area property that's, that you apply for. There are certain criteria. You have to have state road frontage. You can't include environmental features like wetlands, ponds, steep slopes. All of these things get taken out of the land. So you have to be able to, have the ability to subdivide that property to begin with in order to even qualify to apply for T D Rs.
I just want that on record so the folks would know.
Right. Yeah, the way that we had developed the ordinance back in 2010 was to preclude properties that you couldn't already develop from entering this and...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And if I may ask the county attorney, since these proffers had already, and the rezoning already approved, the new proffer legislation doesn't really impact this decision, does it not?
I don't think it does for that reason. They're just looking for a way to satisfy, to basically to monetize the T D R to equal that proffer commitment.
And would, if someone bought T D Rs from an approved sending area and put them into a receiving area, is my understanding that the density in that receiving area could be increased without a rezoning, which means proffers would not come into play? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Part of the state legislation is that if you just use straight T D Rs to apply for a property, you can't require a rezoning.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dunn?
We've been wrestling with this for three or four days. So I just want to just lay out, I just want to lay out some, some questions. This current proffer is approximately $2.5 million. If we approved this, then it would be the equivalent of the county buying $2.5 million worth of land that was eligible for T D Rs, so not a cliff, not a pond, et cetera. And that land is undesigned at this point in time, correct?
Correct.
The value of that T D R today is the 13,900 something, 13,952. That value changes over time? Is that correct? Let me ask you this question, or let me rephrase the question. Does the value of a proffer, which is currently being listed as 13,952 for one proffer, one unit, does that value change significantly, plus or minus 10, 15, 20% over time?
I think that's, if I may, that's kind of ambiguous because you don't know what the proper legislation is going to wind up being. And this is kind of a free market tool, that it's going to be whatever the sender and the receiver are willing to...
The only thing we really have to go by at this point is, you know, a severed development right, you know, based on the assessments from the Commissioner of Revenue and the Office is $15,000 if you're holding it. If you sever it from the property and you put it in your pocket and you're holding it for however long and not applying it to a property at this point, without further transactions to alter the price, that's what it is currently.
And does the applicant choose where that proffer is used to extinguish, or does the county choose?
No, the county would only serve as the, we would review the, the property that they want to sever from, and we would review the documents that would sever the rights and extinguish the rights. We do not have a role in determining properties that they would use and where they're at.
It has to go into the sending area.
I'm sorry.
It would have to go into the eligible sending area, though.
Right. You would have to choose a property that meets the ordinance requirements for an approved sending area. The county would, you know, process the applications, determine the applicable numbers, review those documents, the recognition of them, and then the extinguishment of them. But that's our role.
And then going back to Mr. Lofton's comment earlier, if you had no T D Rs and a person had 100 acres in a more rural area that currently that stays farmland, that farmer by right could build 20 houses, one house per unit, correct? And so if that happens to be in the northwest corner of the county, or down near Star Tannery, and the county would have obligation to provide bus service if they had children, fire and rescue service if they were elderly, to provide, you know, maintenance of roads through that area once those roads are built, et cetera. Is that correct?
Correct. Under by right development in the R8, it's one house per five acres. And that can happen wherever you have enough acreage to do it, plus, you know, the state road requirements to do so. And then the county is responsible for providing service.
Therefore, there would be a cost to the county, not a direct cost, but an indirect cost, which would become a direct cost over time if farmer A, B, and C decide to go and by right develop certain areas. And I understand that there are some areas in the county in which you do have smaller communities of three, four, five, 10 houses that are being developed, which will require busing. Is that correct?
Yes, indeed. In the rural areas, there is development occurring today.
So the T D R situation would help to minimize that development and concentrate in the areas, the urban development areas, which would benefit the total, which would benefit all the citizens of the county in the long run. Is that correct?
Right. You're still going to have some units, obviously, because this serves as a mechanism for property owners that really want to keep their land. They want to see value without selling it. So you're going to pick up a lot of those properties where they want to see the monetary benefit to keep doing whatever they're doing without actually having to sell the land into residential development. You're still going to see some residential development going forward in the rural areas, but hopefully less using T D Rs.
Thank you.
Basically, Ms. Perkins, you're taking a by right unit that somebody can do with no proffers and develop a piece of property. You're taking that property, relocating it to the area we've designated where we'd like to have the higher density development, and it basically cuts the operating, the cost for services to provide out in the rural areas in addition to preserving the rural areas.
Yes, sir.
One other observation, just if I could, you know, I don't think we should assume necessarily that the county's going to lose out on, you know, $2 million-plus dollars of proffers. The only way that we would actually not get that is if the developer's successful in extinguishing that many rights, which is, you know, you'd have to purchase a lot of development rights to offset all those units.
If you were to offset the entire 180, you're talking between 450 and 900 acres, depending on the scale, based on the three tiers of the adopted T D R sending area map. Because, as you know, ag districts, prime soils, and the rest of the county have different tiers. But it's still, in order to get to the 180, you're talking a significant number of acres that they would have to preserve. So it might be a portion that would have extinguished T D Rs and some monetary payments. It's really just depending, going forward, what they want to do if approved.
Mr. Lofton?
If I may, this is at the prerogative of the board. So another request could come in that the board felt like did not deserve to have this applied, and we could turn that down legally.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Comments? Is this part of the public hearing?
No, sir.
It's not? Just a resolution? All right. Then, then what would be the board's desire or action on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dunn? Supervisor Dunn?
I've spent a good time, good bit of time with county staff and speaking to some fellow supervisors going into this. I'd like to see if we could postpone this for 30 days, just so that we can get some more information on the value of the T D Rs, the actual application of those T D Rs. I've seen this for the last four days, I think since Friday. And so I went just to see a 30-day extension on this to get a better handle on it. I can lay out my pros and cons on this, but that's, that would be my proposal.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone for 30 days by Supervisor Dunn. Is there a second?
My second.
Second, Supervisor Slaughter. Any other discussion, comments? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, in my mind, of course, and I like, think I'm fairly cognizant of the implications of these proffers. I don't see the postponement being in anybody's best interest. I think we need to make a decision. The T D Rs, this T D R program has been in place now for five, six years. We can't determine, seven, we can't determine what the monetary value that's going to be. It's going to change. It's like, it's free market. It's going to go up. It's going to go down. It's going to be between the buyer and the seller. And I can see nothing but benefits long-term as we do this, so I can't support that motion.
Mr. Chairman? Lofton? One of my concerns is that Ms. Perkins made the comment that the 2.5 million could purchase someplace between 450 and 900 acres. That's a huge difference. I'm just trying to get a better handle on what we're getting. If the board approves this motion, then the board's going to have to fund $2.5 million of schools. And it's going to save, down the road, the future costs of, you know, a vacant house or a house in an obscure area. I'm just trying to get a handle on what we are getting. You made the comment, I believe, earlier that, or Mr. Wells did, that some areas might not even qualify for T D Rs. And that's good, to keep that rural flavor. And some areas that do qualify, I'm just trying to help preserve. So I'm just trying to make the best decision with what's there. I mean, we can agree to disagree, but I'm just, I think T D R program is a good program. I'm not quite sure what the value here is dollar-wise on what we're getting for that. If you gave me 2.5 million, I could go out to western Frederick County and buy 2.5 million dollars of land, make it rural, and that'd be great from my perspective, but...
Any other comments? Supervisor Slaughter?
I would concur with what Supervisor Lofton is saying, but I think if, if a supervisor needs additional time to digest it, since we've had such a short window of time to have the material, that was the reason for my second.
Are you ready to vote? Supervisor Ewing? This is a motion to postpone for 30 days.
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Doesn't make any difference how I vote. It's going to, oh, no, I would, doesn't it? Acting Chair votes aye. So we will postpone for 30 days. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, sir. All right. That brings us to Board Liaison Reports. Are there any? Okay. Citizen comments on any issue that you might like to bring before the board? Anyone? Anyone at all? All right. Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion. Board Liaison, or Board of Supervisors comments? Are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
There were a number of us that went to graduations over the last, over the last few weeks. I attended the one for James Wood. I think I'd like to compliment Dr. Savine. I think I'd like to compliment Dr. Savine for treating each of those graduates that came through. He flipped their tassel, greeted them warmly, 309 times in a row, and each one was special. He'd also done the same at the other two high schools as well. So I think that he represents the school system well. He treated those students excellently. And I think we're fortunate that he has that skill to go and congratulate those students in such an effective manner. We appreciate his work. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone? Anyone? Mr. Chairman Fisher?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
To adjourn, is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
If I oppose no, we'll stand adjourned.